That's why I was here, to tell you guys about it. I had the opportunity to reach out to all of you individually. And with one email, I thought, you know, if I could come one night, talk to all you guys at once, save you guys some time. I would love to meet you individually, if any of you have questions. But I, you know, the company sees an opportunity, but also the state has an opportunity that's been missed. I imagine over the last four years, a hundred and fifty million dollars would've been great for the rural communities in New Mexico to have. We would obviously like to be a part of that, but, but at least, hopefully, local companies take advantage of it. But, I don't know. If you guys had questions for me, I'd love to answer them. I only have a couple minutes, but I do, I do want to point out there's an enormous amount of money out there. It is being utilized by other states. The programs do work, they work great. And if you guys had any ideas for us, or any thoughts on anything, we'd love to hear it.
Thank you.
Anything for me?
Do we have any questions of Mr. Stanfield?
No.
Thank you, if you can hang around a little bit, there's a...
I sent an email to you guys, I'll try to send another one. I believe Mayor Jennings, I talked to you, we were gonna hopefully try to meet as well. But, again, I don't want to belabor it, but it is a great opportunity, and we would love any advice you guys have. Or I will send the REAP grant website to you guys, and if you take a few minutes to read it, just in case people within your community do have questions, we want to just know it's legitimate. It does have a timeframe, the money, the money is set to expire in 2027, I believe. So we only have a few years to do it, but we could infuse twenty million dollars easily in this community. Thirty million dollars, that's gonna pay dividends now, but will last for twenty to thirty years, so, cool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, that's all we have, is there anyone else that care to speak? Are you seeing none? Okay, we have, now we have item twenty-four, a public hearing on, vote on Restaurant B- Beer and Wine Spirits License, Liquor License, on the premises for consumption only with patio service to JMRB LLC Doing Business as the Liberty, located at three twelve North Virginia. So, in Roswell, Councilman Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna have to recuse myself from this. As the Liberty is a private club, I have a current membership over there, and feel that to be totally transparent, I must recuse myself from this action.
Okay. Okay, let's see. Okay. Is there anyone here from the Liberty? So...
I don't believe so.
So no one here to ask questions? Do we have a motion? Okay, seeing none, there is no motion? Okay, Councilman Arnold.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing and vote on Restaurant B, Beer, Wine and Spirits Liquor License with the on-premises consumption only with patio service for JMRBLLC, DBA, The Liberty, located at three twelve North Virginia. Roswell, New Mexico.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? You have a second by Counselor Johnson? Okay. Is there, is there anybody opposed to this license?
Yes.
Okay, we have one, one counselor opposed. Well, yeah, I know, it's just, yeah, it's a public hearing, so that's what, but if there's no one to swear in, if there's no one to ask questions to, I have a little concern about having a public hearing if no one's here that wants it. Or, well, there's somebody that doesn't want it, but. Councilman Kevin.
So, Mr. Mayor, I mean, it's really, I'm really kinda confused that we don't have somebody here to have that conversation about this. Is there, can we make a motion to table this until we actually have somebody? So I'll make that motion to table this until we actually have somebody from, from the business who wants to come answer questions.
Mr. Mayor, so this is, this is kind of an inverse public hearing, in that it's the burden of people to oppose it. The state liquor license board has already granted it preliminarily. Only upon a showing by people at a public hearing that they shouldn't be entitled to it, can the council disapprove. Otherwise, if, if we don't answer within thirty days, one way or the other, it's granted as a matter of course by the state, so it really can't be tabled.
So that's part of the new Liquor Act?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we did send out certified letter, and did get a receipt back that they had received the letter, so there was a letter sent stating that we had a city council meeting today.
Was that ever three hundred people around it, or something, ever three hundred feet around it?
No, that was just notifying them that they, to, to attend the city council meeting for tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, I guess, in other words, if there's no record laid by anybody tonight, the council has no basis for a decision, so that there'd be no decision, and then the state would just grant it.
Councilman Johnson.
So by default, it would be approved?
Yeah, these are all, once the state has approved it, they're by default approved, unless the council by showing a fact shows they shouldn't get it.
Okay.
And since nobody's here to oppose it.
And then we, well, that's, sometimes they make good laws, and sometimes they don't. The only, I guess, Counselor Moore's objection, or whatever, said that she wanted objected. So, since there's no one here to complain, what you're saying is that, then we're done?
Yes, so the council doesn't have a record to make a vote on, effectively, so. You take no, I'd advise you take no position, because there's no facts for you to apply the law to.
Okay, then I guess the sponsors would withdraw their motions?
Yes, Mayor.
Pull in the other two? Okay, so all are in agreement, okay. Okay, next we go to item twenty-eight. Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one, the adoption of Resolutions twenty-four dash thirty-one, authorizing the submittal of two thousand twenty-six dash thirty, Infrastructure Capital Outlay Improvements Plan, ICIP. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to propose a special rule for the ICIP, to make a motion to vote on it. The governing body shall adopt the ICIP resolution as follows. Each member of the council shall have up to five votes. A counselor may cast, may cast no more than one vote per possible project. Votes shall be cast via color-coded stickers as provided, on the provided display from the clerk. The counselors will have five minutes total, as measured by the clerk, to vote. All voting shall stop at the clerk's order. The clerk shall then tally the results. If there are no ties, the top five projects by number of votes shall be inserted into the resolution, and it will be considered adopted. In the event of ties, there should be a vote between the tied projects. The loser of the vote shall fill in the next representative's spot. For example, if a tie for second place, a roll call vote will be held, where each counselor chooses their top choice. The project with the most votes will be ranked second, the next third, and so on. This process may happen again if there's a tie between more than two projects. Once five are selected in this manner, the resolution will be adopted, will be considered adopted. This special rule requires seven votes to pass.
Seven counselor votes?
Of the governing body, correct?
Yes, Counselor, so this, this is an amendment to the rules of order made at the, made at a sitting, so it takes a majority plus one.
So I make that motion?
So if there was a tie?
So if there were a, so say there's two number ones that are tied, the clerk would declare it to you. She would say, who wants topic A, the I's? And then if that's a majority, that's number one, and then the other one becomes number two.
Yes, Counselor, or, excuse me, Council, I guess, should be Counselor, not Counselor, but I'm trying to, I would look at this, and I would think, when you have something up here that is gonna vote, and these individuals are gonna go up, they are truly gonna have a conflict of interest. Because the only fair person to vote would be the mayor who has, represents all the people, not just a slight few, and so, you know, there probably should be a conflict of interest. Would you check that over with the Attorney General's Office?
Mr. Mayor, this is something I did look into, and as I am directly reporting to you most of the time, I cannot disagree.
Thank you. Again, you know, it's why he deserves a raise. I don't know what the heck's taking the Finance Committee so long, and the Legal Committee, but he gets it right every time.
Mr. Mayor, debate?
I know, sir, there's no debate today, we're on, we're talking about you all with your little red dots that you hoard to each other, and don't share with anybody else that works for, has the responsibility of making the whole city work, and not just your little picky wards there. You know, us people that make it all work will be here. I guess that'll probably be my trusty city staff that shows no favoritism towards awards, just like their wonderful mayor, and in case, if you need any help there, if you'd like a picture, you can take a picture of us, ma'am, for the paper tomorrow about how wonderful the staff and the mayor are, and how greedy the other ones are. And, gosh, I'm just worried about who's gonna take care of Council Lady Halverson, and Council Lady Moore. You know, it's obvious, obviously, there's been a lot of collusion in what's going on here. I would probably bet the way this looks, right now, those people are probably, not even here, should probably already voted. I mean, I, you know, this is really, this is really tough, you guys, to do something like this, right? You know? Oh my God, okay. Well, would you all, does somebody wanna make a motion, and then?
I made the motion.
Okay, Hildebrand made a motion?
Second in the motion.
Hildebrand first?
We have, we have debate.
Chapel, second? Okay. Okay, open for debate, let's see. Council Lady Arnold.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, can we take a break? We, the video has stopped streaming, so can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, we can do that.
Five minutes? Oh, okay, well, we'll have to take a five-minute break, because you have to stream to look at all the projects. Thank you. Well, I did too, but it didn't work, but I gotta go see Bobby. Uh-oh. How are you? Are you taking off now? I have my poor guy running him all over the hell. Let me come down there. As soon as people come back in the chambers, we can go ahead and get started and get this done. What? I'm glad you didn't follow her, thank you. Don't be doing that, you know I didn't get any dots, you did that on purpose. You did that on purpose. I thought that was perfectly, okay.
Well, you're more than willing to amend my motion, so see fit.
It was Bobby. Cool, I mean, that's fine, too, I care less, let's just get out.
So we need to have a vote on whether would that, these rules are adopted? Okay. We have a, right now, we have a motion and a second here, and then we have, we have a group of rules that have be, have to be, that Counselor, or those rules are already in here?
No.
These are the rules we have to, we have to accept these rules that, I guess, you know, I wouldn't know if you all have these or not. I see some here next to me, I hope you all have your rules, but, so. We have the rules that Counsel, Counselor Hildebrand had proposed for that in his motion. And is there any objection to the rules that Counselor Hildebrand had?
Mr. Mayor, there is debate.
Yes.
Yes, I, that's what I just said, is there any objection, I didn't know. Yes, sir, okay. Would you like to sign up? I don't have my list, I can't see you all the time. But, Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that this ICIP thing is a mess. And it's been a mess since I've been on the city council. But, I have objection to item number two. I have five votes, correct?
Yes.
Can't tell me how I'm gonna vote or not vote.
Amen.
If I'm gonna put all five stickers on one project, then that's what I need to have the ability to do. And, I'm sorry, but I am one counselor that has five votes, and I wanna have the ability to exercise that vote in any way I share to do it. That, that's just the way it is. So, do you want an amendment, or you wanna get back to debate, or what do you wanna do?
That will be, we're, well, these are the rules we're talking about, so we have
That's the motion, if he wants to amend, then amend.
If you wanna amend them?
I wanna amend and strike number two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to amend and strike number two, which is Counselor cast no more than five, than one vote per possible project.
And, and one more point of order, if I could?
Yes, sir.
We've got two council people out. I don't know what they're doing, why they couldn't come, none of my business, they're not here. In all my years of public service, if I'm not physically there, I can't vote. Now, I know since COVID, that's been changed, you can appear telephonically. But if you're not here, you don't get to vote. That was the rule in the House, that was the rule in the Senate. If I didn't wanna vote for something, I'd run out in the hall.
That's not the rule now.
When I was on the county commission, if you weren't there, you didn't get to vote.
Counselor Corn, Mr. Mayor, yeah, so the Attorney General's opinion on the matter is that now that COVID's passed, the general rule is, you need to be in attendance unless there's some type of city business or communicable disease that would otherwise not keep you at a meeting. Otherwise, you might run into an Open Meetings Act violation by voting and not being present. The general, the way this would be applied, though, in a, with the governing body is, now that the counselor has brought the point, and it's a point of personal privilege correctly presented, the mayor, as the presiding officer, has to make a determination whether to accept the point of personal privilege or to decline it. If it's declined, the counsel, counselor can move to have the whole body consider it.
No, we got a deadline, we can't do that. So when did that opinion come out?
So it's not an opinion, it's like the guidance that the office issues? And, yeah, the short answer, they issued an opinion saying for COVID, we're gonna kinda turn a blind eye to it. We're out of the emergency.
So if I'm on a cruise, I would necessarily follow that line of thought?
My, my legal opinion is, if you have a communicable disease, we're on city business and can't be here because of it. Those are pretty much the only two exceptions for phoning in.
Okay, I don't know where, where the counselors are.
Can I say something?
Yes, is that Counselor Halverson?
No, it's Moore.
Oh, Moore, Counselor Moore, okay.
The thing about that is, that may be true, but to change it at this point in the middle of a vote, I think is out of order. Now, if we had a talk about that prior to this, I might can see that. But for you, just to, in the middle of a vote of something, to say, all of a sudden, all of a sudden that you can't, you need to be there, you need to be sick, now you're just gonna change the rules in the middle of the ballgame, I, I, I don't think now you're just gonna change the rules in the middle of the ballgame, I, I, I don't think that's, I, I understand why Mr. Corn is staying, councillor Corn is staying, but to change it right now in the middle of the vote, how is that fair? How is that okay, is right now, we get ready to vote, now you say, if you can't be there, you can't vote? Even though I follow all the procedures, I've turned in the information, we know, everybody knew last month that me and Ms. Halverson were not gonna be here, and so now all of a sudden, we're voting, and now you want to say you can't vote, right in the middle of the vote, I don't, I don't see how that is legal, okay, or fair.
Well, I don't object, because we changed the rules so you can appear telephonically. That was due to COVID, and nobody's rescinded any of those rules. So, she called in, I don't got, I don't have any problem with her, I don't know how she's planning on voting on these five different items, but that's, that, to be worked out between her and whoever she's gonna delegate, or tell them, whatever. But, anybody that's just gone and on vacation, that doesn't fall under, under any rule that I'm ever seen or aware of.
And councillor Moore, to answer the question, it's, it's always been something that could have been raised as a point of personal privilege, it's only, and the mayor also could have raised it on his own, but hasn't. Just to read the commentary from the Attorney General really quick. Even where attendance by telephone is allowed, it would defeat the purposes of the Open Meetings Act if this were done by a large number of board members. That is why the legislature provided that participation by telephone conference may occur only when, quote, "difficult or impossible." Thus, in all cases where it's possible, members of the public body should attend in person.
I don't know where councillor Halverson is, I don't have any idea.
I can't hear him.
I have no idea where councillor Halverson is, I don't have, for, I'm sorry, I was out of town, I, I don't know why she's not here. But I, but I, 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 I would think sometime along the way that you ought either, if you're gonna allow it, you need to do it, I, I do think that the Attorney General has some very strong points about the Open Meetings Act needs to be here, and people need to see how you vote. I, I think that, uh, so in, in some, a lot of respects, uh, we've, we've allowed that time and time again for all kinds of things, uh, ever since COVID, but, uh, that could have been in there as well, because in, uh, to me, in every, you know, in the legislature, and which is our basic building blocks, to me, you have to be there to vote, period. There's, there's no ifs, and buts, or boos about anything. And, uh, do you know, does anybody, do you have any idea when councillor Halverson is gonna be back?
Sorry to throw one more wrinkle, Mr. Mayor, we have to submit this list tomorrow to the state.
Yes, councillor Arnold.
Thank you, sir. I completely agree that, that it is important that people are present to make this vote, however, one of my big crawls is communication, a mandatory vote, I didn't know it was mandatory, I just happened to show up. But, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I think a council should be notified of, and I think that that is actually councillor woman Moore's point, is that it's one thing to make it mandatory, which is perfectly fine and normal according to the law, however, it's another to actually only inform of us that, of, you know, inform of us, whatever. It's gone, it's 4:30 this morning, but, to let us know right in the middle of it. That's kind of why I'm saying, communication is completely key, but at this point, it doesn't matter, because it's due tomorrow.
You know, and I would respond to that councillor Arnold, in that, you know, while we talk about, this is an important issue now for you, but somebody else's important issue, it might be more important than your important issue to someone else. And so I don't think you're really at a place where you can, uh, I, I don't think you're at a place where you can, uh, you can't determine other people who want to see how you vote, opinion about, uh, that it's okay for you to vote in absentia, uh, with other people, because you, you, you're, this is important this way to you, but other people's issues, uh, if you allow that, it's not really fair to the other side, for other issues. If it's good for one issue, it's good for all issues.
What, communication? I completely agree.
Communication, yes, but I'm just saying on, if someone has a right to see you, how you vote, and want you to vote in person about something, you might think it doesn't matter to you, but to them, it makes a great deal, and they have just as much right for you to, you have as much right to say, it doesn't matter to me, but they have a right to say, it does matter to me, and I want to see them do it.
So that I don't assume that you're actually directing that at me?
No, I'm not, it's not you.
Oh, okay, because well, you're.
Oh, no, no.
Because all I'm talking about is communication, from staff. That's all I'm asking for, is actually to give us a notice of something like that prior, instead of right in the middle of. And that's all I'm asking, is for administrative awareness and communication with a city council.
And all I'm saying is, I'm sorry, Mayor, is that I have been eight, and I'm sure, uh, Orpessa's been way longer than that, but eight years, and this is the, this is the anytime we did this vote, and this is the first time, all of a sudden, that they want to, that they say that, that's all I'm saying. If you had to say it prior to that, if you're not there, then you don't get to vote, that's different, but for you to be, we're taking a vote right now, and now you want to say, because you two are not there, then you can't, you know, you shouldn't be able to vote. That's all I'm saying, I'm not saying that if y'all want to vote that, that's fine. All I'm saying is, is to say it right now, I think is, I don't know if it's dirty, I don't know if it's on purpose, I don't know. But, I'm not saying that it's not possible, if you want to do it, you want to vote, not, don't allow it to vote, that's fine. But I'm just saying, I just think we should think about it a little better, if, what's important, like you said, it had nothing to do with importance. The mayor's had to do with the rules, if the rule is, uh, you don't vote, I've never heard of it, I've been here eight years, and I've, this is the first time I've heard of it. You don't get to vote, and it was pre-COVID, before we started doing this, and people were not there, and people were allowed to call in or do whatever, or, you know. You know, so I'm, like I said, let's just move on, if I'm not gonna be able to vote, I'm gonna hang up and not be able to vote, I don't, it's not the point. You know, where I'm at, what somebody's doing, whether they sit up to death, none of that should matter, if the rule is, you can't vote if you're not there, that's the rule. But don't be trying to make somebody reason why you have to tell somebody, why you're not gonna be there, and why does it matter where Ms. Hildebrand is, councillor Hildebrand is, that doesn't matter, if the rule is you can't vote, then you can't vote. I'm, I'm, I'm done.
Yeah, well. Okay, so I guess, where are we now?
So, Mr. Mayor, there, there has to be a ruling from the chair.
Has to be a ruling, so I have to say that we can vote or not vote?
Well, so councillor Corn, so you, you raised a purse, a point of personal order which will take precedent before the amendment. So this is a secondary motion, because this determines who can vote on your possible amendment.
I'm sorry.
It's, yeah, so there has to, that your point of personal order takes precedent over your amendment to the special rule proposal. So the mayor has to rule on that, because that'll determine who can vote on the amendment.
Oh, I just brought it up for discussion, it went completely off base, but that's okay.
So, and, on this amendment, his amendment that we would vote on, he'll have to read that again.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'll clarify something really quick, so, did, were you asking for a ruling from the chair about whether or not they can vote? Or just bringing it up as a point of discussion?
All I want to do is vote on the amendment that I proposed.
Okay, so then there's no need for a ruling from the chair, and then the, the question on the table is the amendment that councillor Corn has proposed.
Okay, his amendment, strike number two. So that, now would this take a vote of seven in the affirmative to pass?
No, this is a, a simple majority.
A majority. Okay, so, is there any further questions? Councillor Orpessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to be clear. The, the amendment is just to strike out item number two?
Yes.
That's correct. And they won't address whether the, the two that are not here will vote or not? No. Okay, thank you.
Might I, I just add this, when you look about allowing one person to put all their votes on one item, and yet, they can all go look and do it, I think, if I were gonna look at this, I would say the only fair way to do it, that it be done in a closed, and, uh, you can vote your five votes wherever they go, and then the winner of how many votes are there wins. And if, you know, and I don't, I don't know that it's, it's, uh, it's not a fair vote if somebody, you vote first, and then somebody else comes up and puts all five of their stickers on something else that you voted for. To me, all the stickers and stuff, this should be a secret vote among all the ten councillors. What they, what they rate, if you let them rate each project, their top ten, one to ten, and then put your, you know, your best project, name it, number ten, and your next best project, number nine, put them all on this list, and whoever, which project had the most votes, then, uh, you know, at least that way, you would get a ranking some kind that would, uh, be fair, but it's, I don't think it's fair to have people, some people can go see who voted how, some can't, on putting their projects on there. So, and you add five, five, uh, five votes to one thing, you know, there's almost, maybe there's no reason for anybody else to vote for it, I mean, just looking at it, you know? So, should those votes, each one of your five dots that you all get, be allowed to be placed where everybody else knows what it is? If you want to do it, you could take each one of your five dots, and everybody could do it, and write down the list of the project on here that you want on your dots, and put it in there, and we'll turn it all in to the clerk and let her calculate it tomorrow, and that be what it is.
I, I don't know if it can be like that, Mayor, because don't we have to vote tonight if on the top, the way it's going to be tonight? So I don't know if that could be that way, because we have to make that resolution tonight. Vote on that resolution tonight, so I don't think that we can count that way. I understand what you're saying, because it seems like something can be weighted, because if I, if, 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 I like me and Mr. Coroner Fran, councillor Coroner Fran, and he voted on the airport, and I see he put five, and I put my five on the airport, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, if you can see how he voted, uh, and, you know, it's, it's, in some rec, respects to me unfair about getting a true unbiased opinion. And everybody rate their top five projects, this way, people can get swayed by what other people do, or they can attempt to influence what someone, someone else does.
Okay, I still think that legs for a conversation, so, I, I don't see, I like the, the stickers, but I guess everybody sees it different. We get to make your, make what you want, and then you, there's, there's, there's still place for conversation, isn't there?
Well, I, I think once this is done, that's our project.
Yes, so councillor, the way the special rule is written is that you are all agreeing that what is voted on this way becomes the resolution, and the resolution is adopted as a matter of course.
Yeah, I knew that, I mean, what our top one would be, not ju, not necessarily, I know that, that we have to turn in our top five, but I meant so, you know, I mean, so that he feels like somebody's gonna sway somebody else, but it's still up to conversation, and you decide what you're gonna put your stickers, and we've already talked about it and thought about it, so this is not like we're just seeing these for the first time right this minute, so if everybody's already talked about it and looked at it.
Well, councillor Hildebrand.
You know, Mr. Mayor, to your point, this list was put together by secret ballot. I had no idea what other councillors chose. And now we're gonna do it a public ballot, I got a real problem with this. This whole process is a mess, because this list was generated by secret ballot. I want to know, because we're supposed to be open, that the, uh, I'll just pick an item on here, because I don't think it was, I never saw it on there to begin with, was the street improvements for Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth. That was secret ballot. Did you all know that was on the ICIP list? Tonight, you knew. Did you know about the athletic field lighting? That was secret ballot. This whole process has been wrong. But I'm willing to go vote for items on the ICIP list, but this whole process is wrong. And I've sat here and watched in previous council meetings, people stack up and put five votes, and then get another councillor to put five votes on an item, and blow off other items that are probably, to me, this is a needs list, this is not a wants list. And I saw needs get ta, or, needs get knocked out for once, because somebody took their five and convinced another councillor to put their five, and we got, we got needs knocked off the list. This is about needs. What do we need that we can't afford, you talk about the budget. This is the time when we supplement our budget with absolute needs. I will not support your suggestion on re-striking number two, I'll tell you that right now. Because I've seen it happen at this council, people go in and put them on, and it's not a dang need. Now, that's your choice, you do that, but you're gonna have to live with it. So, I will not support it, but this whole process has got to be changed, of how we go through this, because again, like I say, this was secret ballot. And no one knew what the other ones were doing.
You know, when.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. When, when I was, went through this list and looked at it, and, uh, I saw that list, and those, those baseball fields that came up, about doing those baseball fields, didn't we just get, the legislature just gave them $2.1 million, and this is on top of that? Now wait a minute, you know, there are needs at the soccer field, I know there are needs there, and, and they have as many kids or more kids than baseball. Because they're not politically, uh, astute, or, uh, in there, we don't have lights on the soccer fields. So, but I think they gave 2.1 million. Senator Pearl did, as I recall, and it was, and so now we're gonna put more lights on top of that? I mean, I don't know, I'm just, I have, I really think, I'm probably more in tune to saying, okay, well, I don't know when Juliana can come back, if she can't, but we ought to have another meeting, and I, I think we ought to sit down and, sit down and figure it out, and, and just say we're late. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what they're gonna do if we don't have it on time, I don't know. Yes, ma'am.
Would you please step to the mic?
Councillors, if we don't submit our list, it will not be accepted, the, there is a hard deadline, and it is for tomorrow. So if we do not submit that list, um, it won't go as the top five for, um, what we're asking, so. I know we're just kind of pushing it towards the limit, but. I know we're just kind of pushing it towards the limit, but. Thank you.
Well, uh, so, well, and my only concern about that is really, so, how can we sit there and, and, you know, uh, how can we really truly evaluate the needs of the city in, in this process? But you can't, because if we're putting more lights on baseball fields, I mean, it's obvious that baseball is, uh, the number one thing, and if you look at the baseball fields, you look at how, uh, how they developed in Roswell from Eastside, Noonop, and, and, uh, and, uh, Eastside, Noonop, and Liantondo, uh, there's some real questions about that, too, just, just the way they developed in Roswell, if you grew up here, you, you know. So. I don't know.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Yes, ma'am.
My thing is, okay, for, let's note, I heard a serverly all say, I don't like the process. So why don't we get through this vote, and then we work on the process for the next time, because all of us have been, some of us are new, some of this is our first time, some of this is the second time for this process, and literally, every, every, every other year, this process has changed, you know what I mean? So, I just feel like, let's get through this vote tonight, and, and then we can work on the process. I don't, those, those rules don't have to be voted on tonight. We could just vote, get this out of the way, and then have a, a, uh, what are those things, we did special, special training or whatever, go over this process so that we don't come here again. We were here last year, same thing, people fussing about the, where the stickers are going and all that, but I just feel like there's so many different people that don't understand the process. You know, like I said, it's been, it's changed, every other year it's changed, so let's, people come up with some ideas, you don't like the process, let's come up with some good ideas for how to make it work for us for now, but we're not going to get that done tonight, when the paper hasn't been turned in tomorrow. And all, everything on that list is going to be turned in, they're going to see everything on that list, whether we vote on five or not, so I just feel like, whatever, you know, the needs of the city is, and I think that's what kind of the secret vote was supposed to be about, is you felt your need for the city was, and I didn't, you know, only reason it had to be secret, so that it didn't come, become out to be a rolling quarrel, that's why it had to be quote, you know, quote unquote, secret, I think is why they called it a secret. But I just feel, maybe I'm wrong, if everybody's my wrong comment, that I just feel like this is not the time to try to change the, rebuild a whole, help, you know, a whole outfit right now, it's not that time. So, you know, if we were going to do this, we should have done this at the last special meeting, instead of trying to do it in the middle of a vote. So, uh, like I said, y'all may be mad at me, or think I'm wrong for this, but I just feel like, let's get this vote done, and then we will change the process, if so many of y'all feel like the process is wrong. Thank you for your time.
And I guess I, all right, we've got a first and a second on the amendment, so I think we'll call the roll, and this would be a majority vote on Mr. Corn's amendment to strike number two. Yeah, if you vote no, you leave it the same, if you vote, uh, yes, you would strike item two, which is the amendment that says you can't put more than one on a, on a slot. Okay, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Hildenbrand?
No.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Marujo?
No.
Counselor Cabin?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
No.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Motion fails, three to six.
So, so the motion has failed? So we're back on, we're back on voting on the motion of, of the amendment, uh, pardon? We're, yeah, the special rule, back to vote on this. And so, as presented, all right? If the, a vote of yes adopts these special rules as they are, a vote of no, would, uh, would not allow those amendments to be put on there. Okay, if the clerk will call the roll.
Can you explain to me what this vote is for?
This vote is to adopt these special rules that are right here, that were presented by Counselor Hildenbrand.
Thank you for clarifying that. Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor, uh, Hildenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Marujo?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
The vote of seven in the affirmative, two in the negative, the amendment has been adopted. Okay, so now?
Madam Clerk, start the timer.
So the clerk, we, does everybody have their dots?
Do I need to explain how I'm voting, how I'm, how my vote went through for everybody, for their piece?
Yes, I, Counselor Moore, explain how you're voting.
I provided, uh, Maia with my, uh, my numbers, one through five, in a, in an email today, yesterday, whenever it was, and so she is going to place my, what color are my dots? They're supposed to be purple. She's going to place my dots on my top five in the order that I gave her, because I only gave five.
Okay, so Counselor Moore's votes are going to be purple, and they are going to be displayed as she has directed our clerk, uh, to display.
Thank you.
Okay, would, would all those people that are blessed and lucky enough to have dots, go down and vote?
Y'all need to give, y'all need to give that mayor some dots, okay?
We could give you a black dot, Mayor.
He didn't get any dots, it's all right. You know, I'm going to tell you, right now, I'm going to say, if you want to vote, you better be here, or else you don't vote. And I feel that that's, that's right where I am, so, you know, I, it's not a threat or anything else, I'm just, you know, the purpose of a two-party system is for people to be there and vote. And we all, and I know, I just got back from a trip, and everything else, haven't been to bed yet either, so.
Mr. Mayor, we are starting the five minutes now.
Five minutes, we got five minutes? It's six minutes, we adjourn, and it's, it doesn't matter how you vote then, if it's not done. But I want to go see how everybody's voting.
No, you don't get to vote, Mayor, you don't get to see.
This is not a secret ballot, just for you folks. I get to see. Four of the kids don't have any. Yeah.
Oh, you don't get it.
Oh, one.
I would ask that these records be maintained. If I could look at it, I would put a wall in your office, so everybody, mine changes. Five, five, we find.
I need to talk to my, about that.
I, 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 I.
Right. Nice to have you see that. What are the dates for August? I've, I've got June, sorry, I'm June, July twenty second, so. Okay, I'll wear them, I'll wear them my other way next time.
Madam Clerk, I believe your time's up. Madam Clerk, I think your time's up. She's put, she's put Juliana's and, uh, uh, Council, Council Lady Ores on there. Give her, give her a break. By hell, I think I voted for twenty. Does that mean I can't? I'm sorry, I think, if anything else, a motion, vote, you need to be here to do it.
Are they, what, what rates are they?
I don't know, maybe. What did, hey, what does the fire station do? Is that an expansion? I know, but is it, is this to expand it, or what?
Yes.
Which fire station? The one downtown?
So what are you going to vote on now? You're, you're kind of confused. It will not be a lunch to him.
Well, they don't get to run their whole damn department, it ain't to put one in each place.
It's been a skinny group.
Then we get more. They can't be in charge of everything, I mean, whoever's there, they, they are where they get assigned.
Yeah, thank God. I don't think Chad liked what I said about city staff, he used to have an attitude behavior. Miller Buds.
Six hundred for the fire station? Oh, yeah. Yeah, they got six hundred thousand for lights, but Noonop got two million or something, or a million.
No. Only reason I know about it is he, he, uh, said that he and Angie got back. It's his dad. Yeah. So me and Miller Buds probably have a problem back in that day, you're right.
Okay.
Glad I don't have to worry about this tallying.
Well, we had nine before. What do we do with Juliana on this, she's not here, so now we will have eight votes?
Too bad.
She's not here.
So there'll be eight, could be four to four, and then what happens? No, you told me I can't vote on this, I'm not going into this thing now, that's, you got a problem.
Oh, no, no, you, you're, you're the only thing that can break the tie, Mayor.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you read us, you have the results? You have the results you have, and then there are two that are tied. The fire station and the cemetery. And so we have to pick between them. Don't leave Council Lady Moore because it's, uh, there'll be only eight votes in this next election if everybody's still here.
Okay, so item number eight is fire station number one expansion. And then item number twelve is the new columbarium construction at South Park Cemetery. So then I'm going to go down the line and you tell me if you're picking item eight or item twelve.
Item one?
She's, you have a choice between item eight and item twelve.
Fire station or columbarium?
That, the fire station is improvements to the fire station so they can have women. And the other thing is you vote for the columbarium as the cemetery. Now, they will both be on the list, just one's higher than the other.
That's what we're, that's what we're getting at, yes, sir.
Okay. So.
Item eight is the fire department. Item twelve is the columbarium. Counselor Arnold?
Eight.
Counselor Heldenbrand?
Eight.
Counselor Corn?
Number eight, fire station.
Counselor Marujo?
Eight.
Counselor Cabin?
I'm on fire. Fire station. Number eight.
Counselor Oropesa?
Twelve.
Counselor Chapel?
Eight.
Counselor Moore?
Twelve.
Counselor Johnson?
Ocho.
Oh, I thought we were short one more, but that's right. You're okay. Ms. Maya, could you, could you go over first, first through five for us?
Yes, sir. Can you see this on your screen? I know, but I can't get to it.
Oh shit, that's why. So you have. Well, I can't read the damn thing. You took it down. The print's so small, who could read it?
Yeah.
Well, I don't. Can you read it to us? You can't read that small print.
Oh.
Shit. You know, I can look at this right now. All the younger people voted for the women in the fire station and all the older people voted for their friends that are going out there real quick. Well, look at it. It's true. It is true. I didn't make that up.
No, it's not, because I'm not old. Watch out.
I'm not old either, but. Yeah. Yeah, it's the, they read the other ones off, but fire station eight is above the cemetery, but the cemetery.
I didn't hear the top five for the resolution.
The top five are. Okay. So number one is real-time crime center.
Is what?
Real-time. Number two is, why did you take? What's the one up there?
Oh. Okay, let's go now. We can hear, I'll hear number two. See how bad this is? I think so.
Number eight is three?
Kind of like one in New Mexico County.
Out of here. They're dumb.
You Republicans, you Republicans have been doing that year for years, ever since nineteen seventy-four. Last time we had a Democrat majority on the county commission was nineteen seventy-four. You guys been stuffing the ballot box ever since. You got mad when sixty-four in the John Birch Society when Goldwater lost. And you've been getting even with the poor Democrats ever since.
Tell us how you really feel, Counselor.
You stripped me of even having a voice. You know the way it was?
Everything.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our top pick is the police department. The sec- is the real-time crime center. Number two is the airport terminal generator. Number three is fire station number one. Number four is the columbarium at the cemetery. And five is the land acquisition at wastewater treatment.
Wastewater. This, this one really gone to the well anyway.
Those aren't any of them specific ward-driven, Mr. Mayor.
I told you we weren't deciding from five and six. We were deciding just between three and four. I told you.
Well, that's all right, but none of them, you can't call any of us greedy because none of it affects our ward individually. They are all needed items. And the whole city's gonna benefit from every one of those.
You know, I look, we've taken care of the police, the airport, the fire, the people that are dying in the balloon farm. We've taken care of everything. Madam Clerk, do you have anything? Oh, excuse me. Uh, Mr. County Manager, would you care to make your report? City manager? Well, he should have been in the county, then we wouldn't have had this problem. But this.
Mayor Jennings, yes, sir.
Okay, tell us, please, what's going on that's left that's good?
Yes, sir. Mayor Jennings, members of the council, I plan to totally smoke Bud Conkle in terms of time here this evening. Yes, sir. So, of course, we had a successful UFO festival. Our population just about doubles in terms of the people in Roswell. That's good to our hotels. That's good for our lodgers tax. Um, and great job by Main Street Roswell, as far as I can tell. A very successful event. Um, we also had a successful fiscal year-end close, closing of the books and roll over the new fiscal year, starting July first. Uh, according to our treasurer, that is the smoothest she's ever witnessed in her time with the city. Um, having said that, we did have a hitch with our water billing. As you know, I reached out to each one of you yesterday, was alerted to the fact that we had some partial billing uh, where portions of June were charged at the July rates. Uh, spoke to our attorney. Uh, his opinion, legal opinion, is that we could suspend that to make those corrections. Uh, we cannot go retroactive on our rates. So I really appreciate the council's support. We put out a media blast and Facebook post explaining the situation that had happened with the water billing. And again, appreciate your support in letting me own that and correct that for the city. Uh, Pickleball Court's sidewalk is in as of today, so that court is now ADA compliant. We can open the court. Uh, we're still lacking a fence to go along the side, uh, but the request from the foundation or the adult centers that we open that court. And I agree with them wholeheartedly. Met with the FAA this week on a couple of items, one of those being our air races. They were very supportive. Uh, their message to us was we are compliance first, uh, but we're excited for Roswell and we want you to do well with this. So we are gonna partner with you in making sure you do well with this. Uh, also spoke to them about the, the city's land sale out for Builtwise. Uh, it is a process. It is the FAA's process. Uh, again, they feel supportive of this, uh, but it's a new process driven by a new legislation from the federal level. And they explained that to us, uh, and they have sent us some more questions and we're turning those around rapidly uh, to keep going forward with the process. Uh, Mr. Aitma and I went out and spoke with Builtwise this morning. Uh, Senator Ben Ray Luhans representative was here in town. Uh, she's going to take back some information. Uh, Mr. Aitma is gonna be preparing a letter on behalf of the city uh, explaining the economic benefits of that Builtwise facility in terms of jobs, in terms of economics, in terms of affordable housing, in terms of rebuilding Ria Doso, all out of Roswell, New Mexico, uh, with those, those homes. So, uh, that's good news. Uh, got some more good news today, this afternoon. Uh, our city projects manager, Mac Rogers, submitted a grant request for six point five million dollars uh, for our airport-specific infrastructure, uh, right in ahead of the deadline. Uh, I believe the deadline was June thirtieth. He submitted it June twenty-seventh. That would have been a Friday. Um, got that up to Mark Roper with State EDC Economic Development. Uh, Mark turned that around and sent us a response today, uh, that we have received, been awarded six point five million for the airport. We're gonna need a portion of that six point five million to complete the southeast waterline project and the southeast sewer line project because originally, as planned, uh, and designed, there was no, uh, it was just a water line, uh, which it made no sense, uh, to follow the city's master plan from ten years ago. And there's some good things in there to develop that southeast waterline without a sewer line, without power, without utilities, without gas, without communications. So we are doing all of those things in the southeast waterline. We're gonna need a portion of that money for this, um, for, for that development. Uh, but we certainly feel like we can, uh, support the Reno air races and we'll need that money for those things too. Uh, as you know, our bleachers are looking like they're gonna come in a little over, uh, three million dollars in terms of quotes we've received thus far. So, and we need to get started on those soon. Uh, one of the things that the FAA also, uh, requires, and they made this very clear, is they need a full package on the Reno air races coming to Roswell. They need to understand entrances, timeframes, when airport operations are gonna close, when they're gonna have air races going, uh, where the bleachers are gonna go, et cetera, et cetera. They need a full package and we need to get their permission to build those bleachers. There are height restrictions, um, and we need to get their feedback immediately. So, uh, we'll share with you that the city has contracted with Bobby Thompson and Aviation Business Services uh, to look at making our airport sustainable. And they are going to bring this council reports on how we are doing. And Bobby has been here all of two days. Uh, she went with us to the FAA, uh, was very helpful there. Uh, so Bobby is, uh, not only helping us as a sole-source vendor to transition our airport to Reno air races, but to make that airport sustainable and systematic in the way it does its operations, particularly its leases or operations out there that generate revenues. And as you know, it hasn't been sustainable in terms of revenue, uh, for quite some time. One other item, or two other items I wanna make you aware of. Um, the Dog House Grant. Uh, that's a little over two million dollars. Uh, my understanding was granted to the city from the feds, uh, a little over a year and a half ago. Uh, it was originally designated for the Dog House at Cavoo. Uh, one of my first conversations with our airport manager and Cavoo, um, probably a month into this job, was with Bull at Cavoo and he told us they absolutely did not want the Dog House, didn't want it disrupting their operations. Their business model was going in another direction and they don't want that Dog House. Um, and so we've been looking for a new home for those funds, uh, for a little over a year. Uh, I've asked the airport manager and she has taken this issue to our advisory commission, uh, Mr. Conkle and company, uh, to ask for some advice on a potential, uh, project that would meet the criteria. And it is quite a lengthy list of criteria, primarily needs to bring in additional forty jobs. Um, the fixes or the improvements on the facility have to be fifteen to twenty-five years useful life. Um, so we have not been able to get some advice on that, however. Uh, Sky, uh, our blimp hanger is very interested in putting up a rub hanger and bringing in forty people, uh, from another city to come work here, uh, based on that. That would be new wages, new jobs here in Roswell and bring in that, uh, economic activity. So we're exploring that option right now. Uh, the other item suggested to our advisory group, uh, specifically Mr. Conkle yesterday and Jennifer Grego, our airport manager yesterday, is I'd really like to see an engineering study on adding another TSA line out there. Because if you can visualize with me real quick that airport and where TSA is located behind the glass. Now, turn to the left as you're looking down that glass and you see the alien thrown over there. It wouldn't cost two million dollars to extend that glass all the way across, put a new doorway on it with a new access out to the airfield, and now you've got room for another TSA line, maybe two. Um, my guess, uh, you're in the half million to eight hundred thousand dollar range and that's conservative, Lee speaking. Any questions?
Questions? Well, seeing that, I noticed in the back, Ms. Sanders is back there and the chief, our police department and fire department did a wonderful job during all this stuff. The helping, she worked her tail off all the time over there, so we thank you. You know, I did talk to her the day before, uh, the fires broke out and I ordered, or two days before, I did order some rain to come, but she didn't bring it until after the fire started and did cause a lot of flooding. But she's, she was quite capable of getting rain there. Uh, she's done a good job, but, uh, it was one of those people, she and Mike and, and it was amazing to see our city staff. Nobody even asked about getting paid or anything. Who would ever say that? Didn't care. It was all about doing what was right. And I, you know, from, you go out there and watch and look at the people at the college and the institute. It was really nice to see Roswell and to represent them for all of us. I think we're very fortunate. Okay, if there's nothing else?
I rise on a point of personal privilege.
You're out of order. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I can't tell you how disappointed we, that I am in our administrative team. We voted months ago to raise utility rates. May not like it, but that's what we did. And, and we also voted on a form that showed about as much transparency as you can get. And I'm just disappointed. They've had months to work on this. I personally worked on it the last two weeks of June, or maybe it's the last three weeks of June. I don't remember. Trying to get this thing lined out. The numbers on some of these forms still needed to be tweaked a little bit. And so I'm told that the rates went up on the old form. No disclosure. None of the information that's on the one, that, on the form, we did. Now, I also know that there's been some discussion about when the rates were supposed to increase. Wasn't any doubt in my mind when I voted for that several months ago, that it was supposed to start in July. Knowing full well that in the utility business, you're billing people for stuff they've already used. It's not an advance payment like you do. Knowing full well that in the utility business, you're billing people for stuff they've already used, it's not an advance payment like you do rent in your insurance, for instance. I get that, and I, and then, now I found out that it's been suspended, and I question that call too. I don't think anybody has the power, except the ten of us that voted for it, to make that kind of determination, and I'm just upset, and it, we're, politically, we're in enough heat, 'cause all of us are gonna take the heat for this screw-up. Nobody else, all of us sitting up here on this dais, and I'm completely disgruntled that, given ample notice, that it still didn't get done in a timely manner. And we could argue about the rates in six months, but now it's gonna be seven months, 'cause we're not gonna have any data for July. So it'll be, to follow the rest of the ordinance, it'll be February, and by the time you get all the information gathered up, it'll be March. Hopefully, we can get it done by then, and it's, it, it just, it just upsets me a lot, and that's all I've got to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I was just asking, we didn't have to vote on the resolution, after we put the five names on it, we didn't have to vote as a, as a council, because it was written, am I mistaken, that it was written on a resolution, so now we have, we don't have to vote on the resolution now that is updated?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Moore, yeah, the, the special rule, by approving the special rule, you approved what the final result of the voting was ahead of, ahead of the vote.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I just, I misunderstood, thank you.
Okay, we'll stand, thank you all for coming, we'll stand adjourned, thank you.